...meeting of Delphine Garden City Council at approximately seven ten p.m. As usual, the first item on the agenda, if you'll please by your head. Dear Lord, please give us the guidance to manage the city and direct it in the manner that you see fit. Overseer our citizens as they perform their daily duties and oversee our staff as they perform their duties for our citizens. Please take care of our military as they perform their duties and help guide our nation in the direction that you see fit. In your name we pray. If you'd like to do this on our pledge... I can't.
Be careful. The American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To the Texas flag. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
As usual, the first item on our agenda are citizens' comments. So if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. I try and limit the comments so kind of get to some of the other stuff I need to. So if you'll be brief, please, I appreciate it. Steve Flowers?
Okay, if I stand over there?
You can stand. You want, sir?
Steve Flowers, 3306 E.V. Moore, down at Arlington. First thing I'd like to do is set the record straight, Mayor. I listened to the last meeting about this leveraging of XTO by citizens. I just want you to know that I personally have no intentions and I never did give $2,000 to leverage XTO. I would like to jump right in, address Mr. Snodgrass's comments pertaining David Nicholson on the inspector. And I wanted you to know that I spent a lot of time getting the okay from Mansfield on this inspector. He is free to contract with the city of Mansfield on a monthly basis. One of the disturbing things I had, and I don't know if you had the correct information, you made a comment that you couldn't support him. First off, his name is not David Nichols, it is David Nicholson. Steve Lowe had it correct. He has 30 years' experience. He's in charge of 206 wells in Mansfield. I think that speaks for itself. Mayor Tetter may have gotten you a little confused. He quoted $4,250 per inspection. He confirmed it on a voicemail with me, but that's what it was, per inspection. Okay? It's on the voicemail. I wanted to confirm this with Mr. David Nicholson. This is a text from him. Okay? My quote to him was 300 or 325 per inspection. My rate is 125 per hour for additional site visits. All right? Ladies and gentlemen, we have 10 wells out there. I have three wells on my property in Mansfield. It is a very clean site. The necessary inspections, we've got too many movement parts, high pressures. We've got to do it once a month.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Yeah.
Just for the record, so you don't keep going down this path. We've already hired an inspector. He's already done another inspection. It's already posted on our website. It's been completed. So I think we've taken the necessary steps to start a monthly inspection. They're doing it. I believe that the inspection report even said there was an issue, one issue that they found that needs to get adjusted. XTO is working on that. But the inspection report is out there. It's already been completed. It's already been a full report that's been published out there for all of our citizens to be able to review and edit. So I understand your beef with Mr. Nichols, Nicholson, excuse me if I got his name wrong.
I don't have a beef with him.
So, or with whoever for not hiring him. But he wasn't the inspector that was, that did the inspection. But we do have one he is contracted with. He is doing monthly inspections now and/or additional inspections when we see fit. So if there's something going on that our citizens see, they feel like there's something that needs to be done.
It might have been nice to contact me and let me know that before I went and said all this.
I'm very sorry.
I email you, I mean to email you at least once a week.
Steve, I've been very distracted myself. As soon as I got it, I sent it to the staff. They published it, put it out there, sent it to all of our council members. I believe all of them got it. And I published it on the website. I'm sorry I didn't contact you or the restoration group directly. I meant to, I just completely forgot. So I apologize for that. But I have taken care of that as we discussed. We went through several different inspectors and things in the criteria. And we've got an inspector that is, at this point, we feel compensated, competent, competent to do the inspections. If there's something that you see or something that our citizens see that they don't feel is appropriate, please let us know. And I'll be more than happy to get them back out there to do another inspection.
I'll show you right there, Chief. There you go. There's a tank without a shell on it, without a protection. I think it's against our fire code. There's my three tanks on my property, nothing underneath of it. You got erosion control problems. I talked to them specifically with my inspector over there.
Send me a direct email. I'll send it to the inspector and ask him to re-verify that some of the things that are in compliance in our code. I mean...
What's his background? Do we get, do we have his resume? So my neighborhood can see who's doing the inspection?
Absolutely. His name's out there, it's published. I'll be more than happy to get you all the other information.
How much experience does he have?
Well, he should be, he published the report, it's on the website.
I'm not going to sit here and debate with you who he contracted.
I'm not debating with you, I just want to know.
I will get you all the information. His name's out there, if the report's published, you can look him up and do all the research you want to do online regarding his name. I mean, that's pretty easy to do. You can contact him directly if you feel like you want to contact him regarding your site. I mean, you may want to have him do your site. I have no idea.
David Nicholson does my sites. It's cleanest one in the barnet shield, as all the sites are down there. I know what I'm talking about, Mayor. All right? You know, that's my package right there. Yes, please. You know, I come in here April 16th and you treat me like I don't know what I'm talking about. You banished me from the meeting over this ordinance for gas electric, electric gas lifters. Now my neighborhood, we have this monstrosity out there, this hydrocarbing digesting monstrosity that puts out VOCs. VOCs are volatile organic compounds, if I'm saying that correctly. We could have had electric compressors out there if this mayor and council were to listen to me. The only one that commented at that meeting positive about this was Mr. Pylon. And he was put right in his spot by Will Winston of XTO about this clean burning machine. The key word you should have listened to was burning. All right? You're not stuck with this for another 30 years. My new neighbor Caleb Olden just pulled, just moved into town, one-year-old baby. Right? I think he'd like his son to fish in our lake one day. In the meantime, he's got to put up with this when we could have had an electric compressor. And furthermore, all right? That's my experience with him. What I say, all right? I have facts. I don't come in here and shoot off the hip. All right? I support everything with pictures. I am fully capable. And I'm sick and tired, every single thing from this on the way over is so pro-XTO, it's ridiculous. And anti-citizen. This is my neighborhood here. This is our neighborhood. All right? And I want to make a proposal to you. Because I sat right there with you after that meeting and I mentioned some of these things to you, Mr. Mayor. And you said you have too much time on your hands. Maybe I do. I am semi-retired, I guess you could say. But I still have a business to run. You said you have a business to run. You don't have time for this. All right? I'm here tonight to make a suggestion on how this thing, how you want us to coexist with XTO. I thought long and hard about this proposal to you. All right? You have, from here down, I've never heard anything negative about XTO. There's a lot of negatives out there.
There absolutely are.
All right? There's an erosion control problem right now. Every single other town has a separate management team that takes care of their natural gas. We now have 10 wells. Okay? My suggestion to you is to appoint a management team. All right? And I'm the first guy you should choose. Steve Lowe's the second guy you should choose. We should be co-managers of this team. We can put this whole thing to bed. All right? We don't have to have anything. Mr. Motley, we don't have to have emails back and forth. You don't like me questioning CH2M Hill. We won't even get into that. All right? Steve Lowe and I run this management team. You appoint three other members that Steve Lowe and I pick. We run XTO for you. You go about your mayor duties, you go about your council meetings. We do this. We take them on. Steve Lowe on. Elected official with a citizen that has this kind of experience in dealing with XTO. All right? Take a little thing. Do you have the inspection for the pipeline? Has that been done? Do you even know about it?
I do not have the inspection for the pipeline, I don't know.
Okay, just so you know.
Pipeline that's in D W G or the pipeline that's downstream?
Right here. Right here. This pipeline's got to be inspected once a year. All right? For leaks. You've got a pipeline in there on gravel fill. Not, you know, this is critical. These are things, I'm the guy...
If somebody didn't walk over it.
I'm the guy that should be protecting my neighborhood. Well, I got a lot of neighbors here today. All right? How do you feel about this?
We need someone representing us.
I can work with Mr. Lowe. All right? And I would say that Mr. Lowe and I would be over that monthly inspection. I want to see it every month. Every single month. I want to, and I want to talk to the inspector. This is my home. We've had too many incidences there. And furthermore, I think that Steve Lowe and I can handle it with three other members. And I think we should report directly to Mr. Jeffrey. Thank you very much.
Steve?
Mayor, before you step aside, can I ask you a question, sir? Could you clarify your implication about my authority, please?
You bet I can, Ed. You work for CH2M Hill. They sign your paychecks. You have contracts with Exxon and XTO. It's another branch. I'm only going by your email. That's my clarification. All right? I have a distributor that gives me thousands and thousands of dollars, or let's say hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of business. And I've got to say anything negative about it. I'm going to come in there and I'm going to say I'm not biased. You may not be biased. I mean, it might not. I'm saying, under the proper way of functioning, in a gorge situation or a council situation, when it comes to decisions about XTO, you should recuse yourself. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying you're doing anything deliberately because of what was one of my better dealers. You're darn right I'd be saying everything good about it. I don't want to jeopardize that business. And the engineering brotherhood, I mean, it's tighter than the attorney brotherhood. I mean, it's...
I don't speak to any attorneys.
Mr. Jeffrey, just may I clarify this? I work for a company that is a multinational, 26,000 employee firm. They happen to, I do not have any direct contracts, any work with XTO or ExxonMobil. I do not work with them directly. My firm does. Should I have been recluding myself?
I don't think that the Texas statutes addressing that require you to refuse yourself.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments?
I really think that the rest of the...
Please, I need your name and address, please.
I think, from Penadrid. Oh, address 3305 E.V. Court.
Thank you.
I think the rest of the citizens would feel better because there's been a lot of animosity about the whole XTO thing, especially for those of us who live close to it. If there was a citizen on the board along with, you know, a council member, we would feel much better having someone represent, that we feel is representing us.
We had an ad hoc committee.
Yeah, well, I...
But you didn't like that?
What committee?
What did they announce?
The parkland? The parkland?
Well, we started off, see, everything is, it's, the beef has shifted. It initially was the fact that we put the frac tank in the park. Then it went to the point where the lake level was low and XTO was stealing water. Then it's, then it went to the dam. Then it went to, it's an illegal dam. XTO shouldn't be drilling on the dam. And so then we appointed an ad hoc committee, who were citizens, to help with those particular issues in restoring the lake, restoring the park, and doing all that sort of stuff. Because we thought those were the issues. What's happened is the issues have shifted. Okay? And so we've already, we've already done, and I'll be glad to, I get to pick the hours. I'll be glad to work with Steve in any way, shape, form, or fashion.
Well, I think one of the main things are inspections. We need good inspections.
An XTO representative inspection. Somebody of a buddy of a buddy.
I don't, I don't know that we've done that. Have we done that?
We're not saying that. What I'm saying is, we really need good inspections. Other wells around have them. Why did it take so long?
Well, let me, let me say from my own opinion about all this, is that my job is to make the citizens happy in any way, shape, form, or fashion. That's what my job is. It's not a very high-paying job, but that's what my job is. And whatever I can do to make you guys happy is what I want to do. And if that's, and in the walking path of trying to make y'all happy, that there are infractions that we uncover that XTO has done or whatever, I'll be the first to raise the flag. Okay? So I've got no problem. That's what I want to do, is make y'all happy. That's my job. So if, you know, Steve and I didn't discuss this partnership deal, I'm all for it. It's fine with me. And I want to do whatever it takes to make y'all happy.
We have to have some authority, though. You got to have authority. I mean, you can't...
To do what?
Do you want to close down XTO? Is that what you...
Not at all, sir.
Because you said that in your emails.
Not at all, sir.
You wanted to shut them down.
I said the danger of revoking their permit is real. They have a TCU, TCEQ claim against them that they drilled on a dam. That's not me, Mike. That's not me. That's TCEQ. They called me today.
We're not really sure exactly what's designated. We don't know what that claim is or if there is actually a claim.
Guys, look, let's not be naive. That's one-tenth of my drilling permit with Mansfield. The surveys that they're, I have Carter Burgess also. They had to know this was an impoundment. They showed the lake. They showed the spillway. I mean, these are civil engineers that specialize in this. The detail that goes into this is incredible. It took them a year, four months before they had their first drilling permit.
Let me ask you, let me ask you another question, Senator. This isn't even on the agenda or any discussion, but we've been drilling since this whole thing started in 2007, I believe. Is that correct?
That's when we signed the lease.
2010, okay.
Correct.
For the last, I'll at least track of time, eight, nine months, you've been unhappy. Why weren't you unhappy back in 2010 or 2011? What was the straw that rubbed the camel's back?
Mayor Tetter will vouch for me that in 2010, I was extremely unhappy. In fact, I have to sign an affidavit for the TCEQ that came today on the pictures I had. All those pictures I sent to you, Steve, I shot over the holidays from 2010 to 2011. That's why we know about the water. I shot pictures of the hose going in. I, and water, I didn't, I didn't know.
I've got pictures in 2010, shot from the shoreline with the light being full.
Well, here's the kicker, what I was concerned about. I have all these emails that I sent to Winrun about cleaning the site up. That's what I was concerned, I was concerned about, it was all going to be running off of there into our lake. And that, my concern goes to 2010. Mayor Tetter and I worked together in 2011 when we first got our checks. We were both unhappy then. That's another issue. This thing just, you know, eight, nine months ago, Steve, this thing just kept growing legs after legs after legs.
But you sat dormant for two years or powered along and then...
We don't, we don't need to debate with him on...
Okay, all right.
He obviously is wanting to get this resolved. We need to figure out what we can do.
I want to help.
We need to figure out what we can do.
I know we have to coexist. I know it.
Please. Started the process. I've got the inspector. He's done the inspection. That's been done. A new one. Completely different. Let's go with this and see what we have. Please review it. Please review it. If there's things that you see that aren't appropriate, send me an email. I will send them to him and say, I need this addressed. The only thing that I'm aware of right now, there's lightning, testers, or restors, or something that aren't appropriately done, which I know, I'm not an engineer inspector for this, that's what he does, that need to be addressed. And those are concerns. To me, big concern. If it's a lightning and it's not on there, what really happens, I don't know. And I'm not sure, I don't know until they get done. So we're doing this process. You know, I'll take blame for not getting it done fast enough. I presented to council, a couple of council meetings ago, to get the new inspector. And we went, him and all, we got new ones. We didn't have enough. I went and found more, we got more. We've got one. We picked one. He's doing the job. He started the process. So let's give the guy a chance. Let's go down this path with him. If citizens see something that's not appropriate with it, or if you see something in the report, you're saying that you're the next level up, maybe not an expert, but you're pretty damn good because you've dealt with your situation on your pad site, look at it. There's things, Mr. Nunn, that you see over there that look inappropriate to you. Let me know. Send me an email that addresses it, that I can forward on. Not just a, you know, hey, you guys didn't do this, we didn't do this. Let's document this stuff appropriately. If there's things that go on, I know you guys have called. The chief has run some calls out there because there was hissing and things going on. We've looked at those, they inspected them, they did the thing. So we're trying to take the next steps. It's not going to get solved overnight. We're not going to shut XTO down overnight. We can get them in line. We can get them up to date. We can get the inspections and get the site the best way we can. So let's go down this process, not as enemies. Let's work together to get it done. And I've taken the steps, our council has taken the steps to try to address these things appropriately. We're not shutting the door. We're not saying you're stupid. We're not saying you're ignorant. We're not saying you're fighting us. We're just trying to do it the way that we understand the council works and how we have to go through the process in order to get stuff approved and to do things. We want to get it done. This is our city just as much as it is yours. I've got no hidden benefit that I'm getting from XTO. If we find XTO for something, it doesn't hurt me in any way. I don't think it hurts Ed in any way. There's no game-playing or any other thing that's going on with that stuff. So if we find things that are appropriate and are things that we need to do in order to address issues with our citizens and address the pad site appropriately, let's get it done. I don't think this council is sitting here saying, oh, we're not going to do it. We will. We just need to be, go through the process the right way. And if it is addressing it with you and getting you on something to do that and we can figure out a way to make that work, great. Let's get it done. So not the fighting, going back and forth 10 years ago. We know all the information. I know you've been working with it. I've been working with it. I still have issues that unfortunately I can't just come out and say, here, we've resolved these things and done these things because they're legal issues. And I've tried to address that with you. I've sent you the attorney's name that I'm dealing with. He can't address the stuff that I'm dealing with and with for our city and our citizens, but he can address the things that, if you want to do it. So I've done those. I know you sent an email saying I didn't, and I didn't do it immediately, but I've got you that information if I'm not correct. Yes?
I talked to Tim Hill.
Okay, so you've gotten the information.
Not Chris Hill, by the way.
And he, I sent the name wrong?
No problem.
Well, I apologize. But it is the firm that represented Arlington, it's the firm that represented Fort Worth, and they got issues resolved. So I'm trying. Let's not get into arguments about when it started, who did what, or what's wrong. Let's figure out what we can...
That's a whole other leg.
What, let's figure out what we can do to resolve it going forward. We don't need to debate when who got involved, or what things were wrong, or what we screwed up on. Let's figure out what we can do to resolve things the best way we can and get them moving forward. That's all I'm asking. And whatever we can do, I will help get it done. It may not get done overnight, but it will get done. And I'm not trying to help out in any way, anybody else. No kickbacks, anybody that I'm aware of. If there are, we'll get them addressed and legally addressed if there's something that is wrong. To the best of my knowledge, there's nothing else wrong. So let's figure out what needs to get addressed and get it done.
One final question. Why didn't we go with the electric gas lift compressors?
Steve...
I've presented that to you, Mayor.
It's an old issue. I can't go back and change it at this point. If we can figure out something going forward, if there's some other better way to do something, or we can change something...
You can't. They're grandfathered now.
I don't know the legal aspects, but we can figure out what we can do going forward.
I can tell you, that was a...
You brought it up in 2007, by the way.
That's right. And we argued and haggled over the electric compressors. And I said, you know, that's what we want to do because it's, you know, they're quieter. And I'm not, you know, the other thing is, as you go along, you get a little bit more educated. Because gas well drilling and all that, I didn't know jack squat. It's just like, kind of like the TAVC and the liquor laws and all that kind of stuff. We didn't know anything about any of that stuff. And we get educated along the way. And, but we requested them and we wanted them. Walter Dewey said that he, none were available. They didn't have any available. Okay? That's what I remember in what his comment was. Okay? So...
Good old Walter.
Whether that's a good, that's what was said, I believe.
I know enough to be dangerous. I'm an accountant by trade. I'm not an engineer. I worked for a oil and gas company. And so I know enough of the terminology, enough of the stuff. I've been to field inspections. I ran a gas plant out in West Texas and helped them go through all this stuff. You know, I've been through those things. I had one of the employees that worked for Texaco got killed because the gas thing wasn't set right. And the, you know, sulfur gas came out. Well, it's sulfur, we don't have sulfur. But it was a thing that, you know, was it inspected right? Was it done right? I don't, that's not my job. My job is to oversee and make sure it does get done right and we get the right things done. And that's what I'm trying to do. And I'll do whatever I can.
Well, and again, I'm sorry, but I'll help in any way that I can. And I can assure you that none of us, and especially I'm not, I have no allegiance to XTO in any way, shape, form, or fashion. If they're doing something that they're not supposed to be doing, I got no problem in dropping the hammer on them. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to like, you know, pick on somebody. Because I could, you know, pick on you how you spray your trailers and are you emitting the fumes through the proper filtration system before it gets into the air. And I mean, I can pick on you, but I don't want to do that to XTO. Because I mean, if they're doing something that's, that's just downright wrong, then I got the...
Just hold them accountable.
Okay. And the lake pond issue, just for the record, it disturbs me, too. I have a pond that I built on my own place that's not holding water and it's really frustrating and it's aggravating. I get it. I understand that. It's taken me a really long time. I still haven't gotten mine resolved. We haven't gotten this resolved. And what we can do and what we can't do now because of TCEQ involvement, it hampers us, believe it or not. And we've got legal issues with them that we're getting resolved. To be able to fix it, I want the pond full of water. I love water. I built a pond on my own property that I have in Fredericksburg because I like water. I don't like seeing it the way it is either, for the record. And I know I don't have to look at it every day like some of y'all, but we want it resolved. And if we have to find a way to pump water into it and do other things, for the record, the pond that we have right here and the pump that we have, I drilled that so that we can have water in this other pond. I mean, those are things that we council approved to get done so that we have the view and the nice things. We're not here to say, we're not gonna do these things. But we do have issues with TCEQ now that we gotta deal with. And they're not fundamentally easy. It's an issue that you've gotta go through their procedures. And you know, they've stated a letter to us. Here's boom, boom, boom. We've answered them all. We've sent the stuff back. We've even paid a fine for impounding water illegally because we have a retention.
They have, that was a permit.
It wasn't a permit.
We have an impoundment that was a permit.
We have an impoundment that wasn't a permit. So, we had to address that.
Which I've never understood. I thought it was grandfathered because it was after 1970.
No, you had to file a permit because, and we didn't, I mean, those are things that happened back in 1960. Why they didn't happen or who did what? Grandpa was out there on a tractor, dug, you know, down to Kalachi and sold dirt to somebody else and informed that. I wasn't here. So, we can get that done. Yes, Mr. Noonan?
Another issue to mention with TCEQ, like the, you know, one of the things they wanted us to do was to breach the dam. That was an order they gave us. And so, we had to hire somebody.
I fought that.
To fight that because we didn't wanna get the dam breached. Now, if y'all wanted the dam breached, we messed up. But I was under the impression that y'all didn't want the dam breached.
They gave us an order to sever the.
But we would've had to go through a very, very lengthy process, breaching the dam, then applying for a permit to come back in and rebuild that and be able to do everything and have whole water and impound water.
We still have, we still have.
And we still have.
We still have a fixed amount of time to file and obtain a permit before they make us breach it.
You're gonna breach the gas wells?
We're gonna do what's easy. We're gonna try not to do it. We're gonna do what TCEQ makes us do.
Try not to, I mean.
I, I got it. I, could I say something?
Yes, you may. Amen to this, for the record.
Sorry, Pat Noonan, 3304 Elkins Drive. I do wanna say, just for your benefit, for y'all's benefit, and Steve, you asked, you know, what's, what's changed? What's, where were you, Steve, for four years? It, what's missing today, frankly, is trust. We live over here. Other than Ed and arguably Steve is kinda nearby, none of y'all do, frankly. We deal with this nightmare every single day. We all moved here because we wanted to live by that beautiful little nature area. I remember us 20 some, 20 years ago, sitting out in front of that going, one of the things we love about this will always be across the street from a park. It's not a park anymore. It's an industrial zone. Has been for years. Let's just, let's just cut to the chase and be honest and not pretend we don't have what we have. This is what we have and we live with it. We own it. We can't get rid of it. Ask Jim Richardson how he's doing. How was this done for his retirement? That house sat, nobody's looked at it for 90 days.
More.
So, I just want to say for our benefit, so that you all understand, because it's, it's not clear to us that you do, that we live with this decision and the management of it. So, let's talk about the man.
Can I make a?
I would like to finish, please.
Okay.
The management of it is an issue. And it's the management of it that has specifically led to the distrust that you certainly have on this side of the room. Give you a great example. I came in here in April. Hadn't been in here for years. Never been to a meeting like that you, that you shared. Talk about the awful look of that pad site. Enough's enough. Rusted equipment, big giant holes in water tanks. Looks like something you'd see in a refinery in, outside of Houston. And this is where I live. We talked to you all. We talked to XTO. XTO comes in, finally. They decide, okay, you know, you wonder why we create a website? So, we can get the attention of people. That's why. XTO responds. What do they do? They come in and say, guess what, folks? We love you. We're gonna build a new pad site. Oh, wonderful. And they do. They come in and actually do what most of the other pad sites around this area look like. Recessed water tanks that you can't see. Water separators that are low to the ground that you cannot see. We lived for years with those god awful things. Then Walter sits here with his diagram of the new pad site, all excited, and fails to mention this gas compressor. Nobody mentions the gas compressor. I come home one night, they can, you know, finally we're gonna get, there's rain in the forecast, the, the ducks are coming back, you know, we're a little bit of life and they're again. I'm like, what is that? What is that? I walk over there. I see what it is. I can't believe it. Cause Walter sat right here with this diagram, proud as could be. And there's that. Oh, and guess what? It gets better. They bring in a partner. A temporary one that's now sitting on a big trailer. Guess what? We listen to that every night. It's running right now. Go outside and listen to it.
Yes.
It's awful.
Are there not blankets over it?
No, there's nothing over it.
See, they're supposed to. I mean, that's.
There. Then guess what? A week goes by and we have a giant green shed. Where was the courtesy from any one of you to give us a heads up that that was coming? And you want trust? That's not how you do business. If I did business in the private world that way, nobody would talk to me. Pat, I got a, I got a deal I'm working on. No, thank you. I see what you did last time. No, no, thank you. We have, we have had to research and dig and thank God for Steve Flowers cause he knows more about this stuff than any normal person I've ever met, non-professional. And he's doing all this work. And you all sit there like we're being unreasonable and we're being difficult and, oh gosh, you're calling to TCEQ. And well, guess what? We live in a world with rules and regulations. I've come out of that world. I worked for a big manufacturing company. It's hard. You, you've got VOCs that go through the concrete, get in the groundwater. You're stuck, baby. You're stuck for 30 years cleaning it up. And they go to the deepest pockets and that's who writes the check. So, here we are with XTO. And they walk in and do this to us. Walter Dewey doesn't have the decency to be fully disclosed with us and takes off and airdrops in that god awful looking equipment over there. And now we're stuck with it. How many of you look out your front door and see a beautiful, big, green tin shed? Besides Ed, sorry. Ed does. This is, this is the worst pad site I have seen in this area. And it sits outside our front door, right next to a Montessori school. I'm sure they're thrilled to have it. But anyway, if we're gonna go forward and work together, surprises like this, don't cut it. I don't know if y'all don't know what's happening. If you're, if you're finding out about it like we are, Obama finds out things in the news. You know, I, I don't know. I honestly don't know. Is anyone at this table, could you raise your hand and just say, yep, I knew that lift compressor was going in?
Okay?
I'll admit it.
You did. Ed knew it. All right. So, these two of you did.
Can I address something?
And none of us, none of us have got it. And Steve Lowe in 2007 was diligent enough in his Q and A with XTO to say, can we have an electric one? And oh, by the way, I understand they can be located a quarter mile away and not on the site, just like Pantigo did.
That's what I wanted addressed. Just because they put this in here right now does not mean, maybe you know more than I do. I don't know. But I believe that we can relocate that.
Hallelujah.
And it can be put downstream from the pipeline.
Let's do that.
It's a suction compressor. So, what a suction compressor does is it draws down the pressure of one side to build up the other pressure on the other side. And so, what they're trying to do is draw down the well side of what they're doing to release pressure to get more gas.
That's great. We all have more gas. We need more gas. And we're fine with that.
But you should be able to. You should be able to, with my knowledge, and I'm not an expert, I think we can have them relocated. I don't know the facts for sure. And I did not, I did know they were putting in a lift compressor. I didn't know how big it was gonna be. It was supposed to be small, supposed to be contained. We got the hole and not 100%. My belief was.
Did I have to get a permit, y'all, before they?
Yeah, so they, they did. They went through the process and we approved this small.
Walter Dewey drew it up. It's supposed to be a small gas compressor.
But it was supposed to be enclosed, not visible, meet all of our ordinances.
And then it come from the council and y'all hasn't agreed they could do it? Or they just go do it?
No, I think they had to, they had to ask for approval for it. We approved it. We approved it based on the information.
The whole council?
Yes, the whole council.
It was a GEM item.
It, it was an GEM item.
Did they not have pictures of what they were putting in there?
They did. And so, we could be the whole bamboozle. I'll give Mr. Noonan credit that it was kinda the, you know, hey, I don't really know what you're looking at right now. Honestly, I have not been back there to see it.
Oh, you need to.
I, I ride my bike and I ride by there and I look and I, you know.
If it runs all night long, you can enjoy it all night.
I, I will go out there and look. And if there's a way for us to relocate it, we've got midstream right here where that pipeline goes to you. That's a site that's in Dow, Arlington, that's got another compressor system in it. And if we can relocate and do something with that, I'm all for it. Let's figure out how to get it done.
Mayor, they can't. They can't.
I think they can.
They, they've put one on my site in Mansfield. It's been there since the end of 2009. There is no moving it once it's, once it's installed.
I'm pretty sure you can move. Well, there's a will, there's a way, there's money to do it. You can always figure something out. My personal.
Let me, let me.
So, I, we, we will, I will go down the path of getting that addressed. I'll have the inspector look at that and say, hey, he's an expert. Figure out, what are the other options?
I was impressed.
What are the other options? And I'll send him an email tonight saying, please review this. I'd like to know other options for what they've installed.
I was impressed Steve knew to ask that question in '07. He had some resource that he had access to. That was a good question. Would've been nice to have it.
But let me, let me mention, go ahead. No, not these cars.
No, actually Cindy Noonan, 3304 Elkins Drive. Mayor Tedder, you just got through saying that you know a lot about the oil and gas business. And yet, all these things have happened. No inspections for the longest time. You knew the gas compressor was coming in and no communication. So, when you say you know that, you know, you know the industry, I feel like we've gotten screwed from day one because you knew this stuff was happening. And so, I think, as Mr. Noonan just said, my husband, trust is the main issue here. And it has been, if we had not even approached the subject, we feel like the enemy. We feel like the enemy. I'm just saying publicly, you asked what would make us happy.
And I still mean that.
And it's developing, it's developing communication and trust.
But see, I'm afraid to respond. I'm afraid to respond. Have you, on all the emails that you guys send out, I very seldom ever respond. Because if I respond, then things are diverted and shifted to another subject. And I, there's lots of emails that I would like to respond to. Ed's responded to a bunch of them and then got hammered. And it's kinda like, but this is, this is the point that, just at some point, we need to move forward. But one of the things when we, we're going through the liquor license and the laws about having liquor stores in Dow, in the gardens. When we first started that, my interpretation, what I thought was, well, that's a good place for a liquor store. That's a good place for a liquor store. And I think one would be good down there, but I don't want one anywhere else. Well, as long as they meet the zoning, there's so many feet from the school, there's so many feet from the church, they can put a liquor store wherever they want to. Okay? And the same goes for gas wells. If somebody wants to put a gas well and they meet the criteria for so many feet from the side yards and they meet all the criteria, there could be a gas well right over here on Roosevelt or anywhere else. They can put them wherever they want to.
The criteria is what you all make.
No, we have any control over it. The Texas Railroad Commission has the law. And if, if it's, if, if, if the gas well, if they meet the criteria, I think it's, was it? I've forgotten that one.
200 feet from the.
That's not clear.
I think this is the point.
Yeah, that's not clear.
So, Cindy, let me. Let me, let me address something. I'm like, blame for is communication on this. Because my belief and the way that this city council is run since I've been here is the communication to our citizens has been through our agendas. So, you talk about the compressor and you talk about those things, they think they're on our agenda. And shame on me for thinking that our citizens were reading those things and that they were informed. They weren't, not even close. Not even close. And, and my belief was that we published these things that you guys did know was on the agenda. If you saw something, you'd show up. We had things for liquor. People showed up. And when they got all upset, we were like, hey, let's have a public meeting. And what we did, when we did the oil and gas, they wanted to drill. People came in, they said, oh, we need this. I set up a public meeting. As these other little things came up, I didn't get big, huge people saying, oh, well, here's this or he's that. Matter of fact, very few people said anything. So, from our standpoint, and I'll, I'll say all of council, we didn't have a Cindy Noonan sitting here going, hold on a second. I don't like this because of X, Y and Z. And the guy's, oh, okay, we got input. We didn't have it. So, we made the best decisions that we could with the information that we had and we published it. And shame on me for not putting in the newsletter and communicating to the next level because I didn't understand that you guys didn't know some of the things that were going on in the city.
I went to the public meetings and they weren't supposed to take water out of the lake. I went to that meeting. It was said, they will not take water out of Pappy Elkins Lake.
So, we had another meeting after that that was listed on there for, I mean, so, Pat, I'm not trying to argue. I'm just saying, look, I'll take blame. But we had another meeting after that that was listed on there for, I mean, so I'm not trying to argue, I'm just saying, look, I'll, I'll take blame. You're absolutely right, the communication and the trust that you guys are looking for, that you believe has been.
Lacking.
Lacking, probably a hundred percent correct. And trying to figure out the way I've done, I published on the website. I, I don't know, I mean, you want me specifically, is the website good enough to communicate with you? Or is it specifically sending to the group? Would you rather have me send emails to that restoration grouping as I find things out? I mean, I, you tell me the best way to communicate additional information to you.
I would forward what you get from XTO to us.
Okay, I will forward the information that is appropriate.
We've gotten a few of those from someone, I don't know who.
I've sent some of those, I know I've sent some.
That's helpful, but, um.
But I posted, as soon as we got this inspection, the day I got it, I sent it to council, I said, post it on the website. Immediately, so that it was out there, so that people knew we've done the inspection, we've gone to the next level and gotten this taken care of.
But no, but nobody, and I want y'all to know this really in sincerity, uh, nobody's tried to bamboozle, ignore, or not care about y'all's wishes and thoughts and opinions about all this stuff. It, it's, it, it's not, but we're not trying to do that. It, that's not what we do. I mean, it's only right, Dan, now you looked at her, does that mean that you don't agree with me?
No, no, what it is, is we were so happy to get you guys clean that site up. You have no idea. We sat there coming home, God, that looks good. We finally, we got something done, we feel so good. And then we, and then the compressor goes in and it's been lit up all night, it's loud, it's ugly. And so, it's like three steps forward, four steps back. I mean, it was so frustrating, it's like we were finally heard, you guys did, you, you did it.
The inspector said it wasn't on.
It's not us against, it's not us against them. I mean, it honest, it didn't, we, we all, on council, mayor, and we get along great, but we don't always agree. And it's kind of like the Republicans and the Democrats up here. And, uh, nobody's in cahoots or nobody, there's no scheme meeting to how we can ignore y'all or anything like that. We, we, uh, we have a responsibility to, to y'all, the citizens, but I, I'm not aware, you know, what a councilman's job is, I, I assume, is that we get recommendations from council, from engineers, and we make, and we study and we make decisions. And then after decisions are made, then the assumption is that the decisions are carried out. But we, uh, it's not a deal that, you know, uh, we drive around the city all day long inspecting. That, that's, I've got a business to run and I don't do that.
No, you do.
I engage and, uh, on, and I'm happy to engage. And when it comes to the agenda, uh, I study the agenda and go to the properties that are, you know, that are, you know, in question or somebody wants to do something different, but it's not a, it's not a twenty-four hour a day deal. And so there's things that, you know, like you say, it's in y'all's backyard staring you in the face and I'm not seeing it.
I, I've got a perfect example, I've got a guy in Sunset right now, he's pissed. And I, I don't blame him for being pissed. He's got a pothole basically in front of his house, the thing, we've tried to get it fixed, we've gone down the path, we've done all sorts of things, but it's not, still not fixed. And I'm, it's not that I haven't forgotten, I'm just, oh, no big deal. It's, some of those things unfortunately just don't happen the way you want them to. However, it still will get fixed. I'll shoot the council when we go through the process of the monies that we've got to do that. And so if we can find things to do, if we can get, I mean, I'm very sorry that the compressor went in without your direct knowledge and it probably should have been communicated, didn't even think about it honestly when they went through the, the thing. I mean, when, when you said he was in here, I didn't think about when he showed the map, oh yeah, they're gonna put a compressor in. They applied for one, but when is that gonna happen? Honestly, didn't, didn't think, oh, well, they're gonna put it in right now. And then when he came back and he said, hey, we're gonna be doing these things, we're gonna use gas lift compressor, you know, temporarily, they were gonna put one in. And I was like, oh, okay, they're gonna put that in. And then they went, oh, we're gonna put the next one in. And it's like, so they send us every once in a while an email, I'll start making sure that I forward those to the restoration group so that some of that other stuff is communicated. Some of the stuff is just operational, hey, we're gonna be doing these things, we're gonna be shutting down, doing those things. But I'll send them just so that at least you have it, um, for the group that at least is by the, the site. And things that you see, you know, I, I know that somebody took a picture and sent me a picture, I don't know who it is or if they're even here tonight, but they sent me a picture of something that was, um, uh, on the front entrance of the pad site. And so I called them and said, hey, you need to get this fixed. There was a thing of oil, whatever, that was spilt all over the place. And I said, you know what, hey, I, I understand that somebody dropped it or whatever, but it needs to be fixed now. I'm not, you know, if one of my citizens can take a picture of it and send it to me. It didn't just happen, they weren't standing there. Maybe they weren't just standing where they dropped it, but you just never know. So those things do get done and we do try to do that. So just, I, I will continue to try to do the best that I can with what I have and the resources that I have and the information that I get. And that's one of the things that, you know, I think we all try to make those decisions. And you're right, hindsight being twenty-twenty, if we went back and we knew, you know, really what was gonna happen or how things are gonna develop, we probably would've changed our minds on some of the decisions. Some of them we probably wouldn't have, we would've left them the way they were. Would be my guess, but I, you know, I don't know, so.
Well, we obviously aren't doing it right because y'all are still pissed. Okay? After six or seven, eight months, however long it's been, okay? So we're obviously.
Feeling somewhere.
We're dropping the ball someplace because y'all are still showing up and I still smell burning tar outside.
When you live in our houses, you're right.
Steve, I wanna, I wanna get corrected on my laps in between.
I have those.
Well, remember, that lapse is from the first frac to the second frac. There was a big gap in there. That's, that's the big reason why you didn't hear from me. All right? They did such a sloppy job. And then as, as we got involved in this, it started, you know, we saw the separators, everybody.
Go review the current inspection report that we got. There's photos, there's a diagram, there's, looks pretty.
I hope he's our man, man. I hope he's our man.
If there's other things that need to be addressed.
David Nicholson, XTO did not want him to be this inspector. And I have that from a source inside XBA, XTO.
Well, I'm sure who I still want, I, I didn't choose based upon XTO.
They did not want him to be the inspector.
We interviewed three different, uh, gas companies. And XTO was the straightest shooter of all the snake oil salesmen.
I agree with you.
Okay.
That a hundred percent.
I had girls showing up with Indisco skirts in my office. I had guys show up, uh, asking me if my wife and I would like to go to Europe.
Time, Steve.
Really?
Yes. Here's XTO's reputation out in the real world though.
I'll get to you in one second.
They go with low bid on all their contractors. I happen to know a contractor out in Lofken, will not work with XTO anymore. I know the whole bid process that they go through. They go with the cheapest. They don't care about quality. And they did that to us with this go frac, they've been around, uh, what, two years, this company that just did the frac? And actually did a better job. I, I will hand them that, that first fracking company, not to sound, you know, but that first one, but was nasty.
You wanna state your name for the record?
Yeah, it's Jim Plog, thirty-three oh two Evie Court. I just wanted to clarify, will we have monthly inspections?
We will.
I just wanna point out the report.
Yes.
Says quarterly inspections.
He wrote quarterly on there?
He is quarter, he's wanting to clarify.
Send them monthly, okay?
Thank you.
What's your charge?
I, honestly, I couldn't tell you right this second. I'll have to go back. But the first inspector didn't communicate with me. When you first asked for it, I asked him to do a monthly inspection, sent emails out to him, didn't get responses, didn't get the formal stuff.
But that wasn't David. That wasn't David.
But he was also recommended by XTO, which is why he's no longer with us. So we went through the process, there was no communication.
Specifically, who are you talking about?
The first inspector.
Paulsy?
Yeah.
You should've known that one, what Dewey said, he's a good man.
He never responded to my emails.
He works for XTO also.
That I asked for and it took time.
Hey, they're all his notes.
I published his notes because that's all I had.
Not the ones working for the cities, no.
And I will make sure that we do have that.
I agree on the outside, they go both ways.
We tried to find, initially tried to find the attorneys.
I'm sorry, guys.
Because our. Previous attorney, Jim, uh, he didn't know nothing about the oil and gas business. And we couldn't find one that didn't have a, an interest in something.
Okay, we can talk about this later, how long we've gotten it. Got me hammered, anybody else have any other citizens?
One more question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Mary Webster, thirty-three oh one Evie Court, and I do appreciate that you've got monthly inspections now. Um, is XTO paying the city back for that?
We have not resolved that issue yet.
Okay.
I'm paying him, well, I'm sorry, you are paying him right now.
I know, my husband is concerned about that. He's represented a lot of them before. Usually the city gets reimbursed by them, but should've been in our.
We never know, I'll tell you.
And second of all, one more thing. I don't know if Jim Jeffrey still represents the city of Pantego, but he used to, didn't, don't you?
Yes.
Uh, you knew well about the electric lift compressors. My mother also has royalty rights in Pantego, so I pay real good attention to it. And I'm on the Pantego, they have their own royalty association, everybody pays five dollars into it and they send out fabulous information on their gas well site in Pantego. That man right there knew all about the electric lift compression.
But it's not.
Just like in Pantego, I don't get a vote on the council.
Yeah, but a few, you know, fights, and so we didn't know.
But that's a citizen thing, I don't think that was the city council appointed organization.
Right, it's not a city council.
Right.
But they are wonderful with their city council.
Organize it.
They really work together, you know everything that's going on up there, every ounce, before it happens.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask about something totally different?
Yes, you can.
Good, okay. I'm Ingrid Cooley, thirty-sixteen California Lane.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I have two questions, the park.
Please pull up, please pull up.
Well, yeah, whatever that's.
We've got, we've gotten, just for the record, we've gotten two bids. Um, I'm looking with another one to get another one. The, the first two bids, one was from Mrs. Stein. I'm sorry, it was from somebody, the Mrs. Stein recommendation, it came in at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. It's, so we're. Is, I believe it was your question, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I just wanted to know what was happening because we're.
Yes, we're still, we're still getting the bid, that's not done, I'm trying to resolve. If you know somebody, send me their names, Steve.
No, get XTO to pay for it. Take this hundred and sixty-eight and fill it in.
What's your other question?
And the second question was, um, are we gonna do anything at all about this traffic on Roosevelt? Those schools, this, you know, whole, I don't know if they were being redirected here, but it is a nightmare to get out of our city with all this traffic that's turning right onto.
Can't even get to your office.
No, I know, I can't.
I mean, it's awful, it's awful.
I mean, the chief and police that better get that resolved.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I know, one time.
I complained about it.
Like the first time in Hattles, what, what's going on? Is there an accident, you know, because you can't get through the, so I did notice one time that we had an officer there that was helping. But I mean, you know, it's twice, it's twice a day at least, so.
Pretty bad.
Well, they used to stagger the pickup lines, I believe.
Oh, it's.
They really oughta go back to that.
We'll direct that to the chief, who was gonna direct that to the.
You know, can we get a lane or can we do something? I mean, just, just like the light at, um, Roosevelt or California and, and Bowen, I mean, that's terrible. You know, all these, we, if you wanna turn right onto Bowen from California, I mean, it's awful. Especially because it's just one lane and, and now, I'm sure all of us Delaware and Garden residents will move over to the left if we know people wanna turn right. It's awful and the light takes forever, so like now we're having this one, it's hard to get out of our little neighborhood. So, you know.
So like California or Bowen?
Yeah, you know, in California, you're going to Bowen, because I've lived right here at the park.
Turn right?
And I'm trying to turn right on, on Bowen.
You have to wait for everybody else.
It's awful.
I thought that way every.
It's key traffic.
You got key elementary traffic that's making a big circuit around and.
Oh.
But even, even, even if it's not key, even if it's like somebody else that doesn't.
It's too tight to turn?
You can't, yeah, you can't.
It's too tight.
No, there's no right turn lane.
Oh, you're okay.
And that light takes forever.
It's widening it, it's widening it.
It's the cycle of the light, it lets the Bowen traffic go and it rarely lets you turn to Bowen. Then where she's saying that she wants to take a right turn, there's a car in front of her.
She's gonna wait.
Yes.
So if we widen it though, that could be a turn.
Widen it, yes. The light unfortunately is not triggered by traffic coming from us. The trap, the light is triggered by the, by the light, by the traffic that comes, you know, they get to turn left first onto Bowen, you know, from the other side of Cal, and then we get to, so I mean, it's really a pain.
How many cars go down Bowen, I forgot, I don't exaggerate.
Fifty thousand?
No, it's more than that.
Seven thousand?
Three hundred thousand.
No, about eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand?
Anyway, that's my, that's my non-gas street level.
We have, we have, matter of fact, in our new budget, with our bond package, we have monies that are allocated to streets. Maybe we can actually address that and hopefully.
Yeah, because now we have two.
I'll list that on our.
Because now, now what you, now what you wanna do is if you, if you need to get out, you literally have to go to, um, what is it? Is it Sabre? Sabre? And go all the way past Veterans Park to get out, because I mean, that's how you have to, because you just can't get. Oh, you know what, it's, yeah, well, but sometimes it's that.
Last citizen's comment, or is there any other citizens coming? She's already been gone, so I'm just going. Oh, you have not?
No.
Oh, okay, Kathy Stein.
Kathy Stein, twenty-six twenty-two, Florida lanes. And I just wanted to say that I'm really looking forward to the city hall extension, which will allow guests to council to come and sit outside of the weather when you're having a second session.
Do you guys have a bathroom too, with it?
XTO's got plenty of room holes there.
Kristen, everybody's gonna stand up and go, we're building a palace for ourselves.
When is that starting?
Hey, we've been talking about it for years.
We've been talking about it for years, we got a bond package, it was put together and we have a limitation, then we have to spend the money in order to get it done, so.
If we keep squeezing it down and making it smaller so we can afford it.
We went through the wish list with our staff and said, staff, what do you need? How much space do you need? What do you need to operate and lay out what you want? They met with our architects and have gone through it several times and made adjustments and things. And then you kind of went through and said, okay, here's the wish list, let's just kind of go down. And we did that. Then we went through the process of saying, how much is it gonna cost? And then we all basically fell over our chairs. And now we've kind of figured out, here's how much money we've allocated from our bond packages in order to do this. And so, how much can we really build of this and how do you make it work? And that's what we're trying to resolve later tonight. Much later, not much later, unless there's more citizens. And for the record, you're new to our city?
Yes, sir.
What's your name?
Caleb Oldham.
Glad to have you, sir.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here, it's a great little town.
Any other citizens coming? Going with, going to us? Any mayor or council comments?
I have one in, in, at the sake of creating more discussion, but hopefully you will restrain it. My memory of the gas lift compressor is this, in two thousand and twelve, I think it's July, Walter came to us and asked for a permit to put in a gas lift compressor. And it's, at that time, we questioned him as to whether or not he could put in electric compressor. And we bought his story and said he couldn't. But he, the way he presented it, it wasn't anywhere near what is out there today. And, and I've said before, there's times when I wish I could have a vote back, that's a vote I wish I could have back. But I, I do believe we were misled as what he's gonna put out there. I didn't ever understand there was gonna be this big ass green building over. He said we were gonna enclose it, but what I understood, it was something that would be below the fence line, so. But just for our memory of what happened in the citizens is that's when the whole thing happened.
I thought it was supposed to be a blanketed system over so that they could lift up when they had to work on it. You know what it sounds like, it's something that can actually walk into and work on.
Oh, yeah, I can remember.
Yeah, see, that's not.
So that's just, I don't, I don't like it any more than you guys do. I feel like that we were deceived. It's not deceived, maybe misled. But, and, and if there's a way we can change it, I'd love to change it, but that's.
Well, we may be able to figure it out, I mean.
And just to go along with what Ed said, it was kind of glossed over, I think he presented pictures from another site and it wasn't nearly as big as this and it didn't have the green shed. And so we just kind of, it even, it even hit us, even thinking about this thing. If this green caboose were shown, I think we would've assessed on it. Let's skim right through it.
And even when he came to the meeting and he showed the pictures, none of those pictures had any drawing or anything like that. Anywhere close to that big green, I think, quite frankly, we could make it something else.
We were deceived.
Here, here.
I, I think we were deceived.
I think you can move it down Pike Point, I believe you can. I think you move it down.
Well, it's like we get educated.
Unlike you, I think you can too, because, because compression's oppression.
Ninety-five percent.
Find out. Get it moving.
Mr. Low, do you have any other comments?
We do too.
To write, remember records, chief, would you like to go over DPS?
Yes, sir, if I, if I may just real quickly address some of the things that are hurt here was, uh, we do need a right turn lane at, at California. Unfortunately, like Bowen Road, we're gonna be under contract, those are national standard engineered lights depending on traffic. And, and it's gonna be difficult getting more, but I believe a right turn lane will leave a lot of those issues. The ACA traffic, unfortunately, your public schools and your charter schools will tell you real quick, they really don't like to build parking lots. And we do have a rush that goes on, we've timed it, it lasts about ten or fifteen minutes. We do have staggered times and they got K through three up there right now, they got nearly six hundred kids in that building. And, uh, and of course you got anxious moms trying to get there because they're all little ones. Uh, we've got them letting kindergarten out earlier now, we're talking to them about trying to get first grade out earlier and then let the, uh, the second graders out, so we'll stagger those times. But we're well aware of it and, uh, we've had officers nearly ran over and, uh, road rage issues and all of those good issues have gone on up there and we wanna resolve.
We try to, we try to. You know, we've discussed this and the, the problem is the people get to the red light, when it's green, they wanna turn right. And when the lines pull, they don't, they just sit there.
They don't have anywhere to go.
Yeah, right.
You come to either turn, get off and go.
And, and what we're doing is trying to move them on, tell them to circle the blocks.
But unless you're there, that's not gonna.
My office is right by Camp Furman and they back up all the way down three oh three, uh, to get in. And then they'll drive down, uh, they think it's, uh, Roosevelt is a two-lane, uh, road all going that way. And I can't get out of my office and, uh, but it's, there's nothing more dangerous than a mama in the suburb.
I agree.
Any other, any other.
Well, we hope to stagger times and, uh, one of the things that, that if that doesn't work, we're gonna go to them, just like APD went to the, the charter school down south, is we're gonna recommend that they are uniformed off to police officers to drive that traffic so we can keep it higher. And, uh, that's what Arlington did to resolve the situation down in South Carolina.
Can't they bus some of the kids? I mean, those are all two small kids, you could bus them to another site to be able to.
Yeah, yeah, they're K through three, they, they've got a good system internal into the parking lot if they will move it. And, and part of the problem is, is that they rush up there, it's this rush run at the point, it happens at Key, it happens at Shore. They have this rush.
They get there early, they get there early to get their kids on.
It happens at the Parks Mall during holidays.
And it, and it does, but unfortunately, there where it is on Roosevelt, Arkansas, you have so many exits. You have so many exits going out, it really does shut down that part of town because of that. And they, they, they stay stagnant even under green lights. So we've gotta train them enough to do that.
Well, chief, can I just ask you one thing?
Sure.
Because.
But just one.
Because we just have the one lane on Roosevelt, so like when they're stuck to, to direct, I mean, even if we could, I don't know how, somehow make it so that at least the traffic that wants to go straight or turn left have that option, because you're stuck.
You are.
You are stuck behind, if, if there's nowhere for them to go or like the red light, so, you know, I mean, is there any way that we could squeeze another lane or, I mean, is that just not possible?
Another right-hand turn lane at that one too?
No, like, yeah, yeah, or, yeah.
Well, but how far would you extend the line? Because if you have a right-hand turn lane, you're still gonna.
The line is still the same standards that, that all I draw.
No, but if you had that light so that it was only one directional, then you could have the ability for people to actually get in the other lane to go past it. Instead of having oncoming traffic coming, it's one light only, nobody's coming in the other direction or can come in the other direction.
There are school districts that do flip streets, kind of like the Lincoln Tunnel in New York. It's one way at certain times and it's one way at other certain times. That's training a whole group, you know, Texans don't train well that way. Yeah, I think that if we can stagger times, that, that'll lessen the burden, it won't, I don't think it'll eliminate it, but it, it will do that.
In the morning too, when they drop off, you're talking stagger?
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely. But it's a whole training thing and getting them to do it and changing school perceptions and convincing five hundred parents.
Because you know that Arkansas is not two lanes, so it's not, it's just our little street that does it. You know, I mean, wow.
But Roosevelt getting clogged up.
So then no right, no right turn.
No right turn. So there's no place to sit.
Yeah, but they have to go to school, so.
Oh, you shouldn't go straight. You look across from there.
That neighbor has fences so high, you can't see oncoming traffic if you're going to turn right.
Where are you talking about?
California.
Oh, you're right. That actually was engineering approved. It's very visibility clear, but you have to be careful going out there.
Yeah, it's horrible. I mean, you can't see a car. You can't see that girl.
The light, then?
I apologize.
Too hot?
It's right on the line.
The other thing, I just want to.
Thank you for coming.
And Steve, we'll take that picture and I'll be glad to look at that fire issue tomorrow.
Any other?
But just for the information is that we did have our day with the law. It was one of the largest days of the law that we've had on record. We saw about six hundred folks out there. We had lots and lots of participation. It was a good day. We had our citizen free CHL class last week. There were about seventy-five people showed up and our town can really shoot, shoot well. Today, we went through our TCO audit, which is a regulatory audit for the state. This is, we got a visit from the state yesterday and today. And we'll have some more to inspect our trucks or everything gets inspected and regulations go over. With that said, our call volume sealed up. We ran through about twelve hundred and eleven calls last month and a lot of EMS calls out of that. And it's just the time of year where we're running a high pitch in the Sterling's. And that's about all I have, sir.
We don't know. Melinda, can I cover your report to lessen the financials for again?
There's not a whole lot to talk about. The books are closed, but we're not bound for them. So the process is good right now. They've set, they've closed them all last week. So now we start reconciling. So I should have something next month. And the budgets went higher, but I wasn't ready to, didn't get to go through the numbers. Next month, the permits, all the old permits are closed down. I have one new build permit in that Sixth Garden Lane. So it's a pretty nice sized one. It's on the backside.
Somebody, you'd like to make a motion for the departmental reports?
Mr. Mayor, I was going to make two forward options. Our annual, our annual awards banquet's on December fifth. It's a Friday night. It used to be a Sunday night at the Lions Club in Pantigo and Stupid at the White Room. And two is on the sixteenth of December, we're going to send out in your newsletter, we're going to invite new drivers and drivers that are about to be new and their parents. And we have a course set up and we've got alcohol, we're not feeding alcohol and give goggles. And we're going to show them accidents and give them some education on driving and drinking and texting.
Texting. Somebody like to make a motion for the approval of the departmental reports, lessen the financials?
Move for approval.
I have motion for approval. I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Item number four, minutes of October fifteenth, Minister of November seventh, two thousand and fourteen council meetings. Somebody can make a motion regarding those minutes.
Motion for approval?
I have a motion for approval. I have a second? I have a second? All in favor? Moving on to item number five, City Hall renovations. So, open the discussion. You guys to look at. We've got, this is the latest and greatest, I think. Jerry was the last one to make changes.
Did you get an email to you? Melinda?
No, I got those from Jerry.
From who?
Who's emailed to the mayor?
Yeah, I got it. Do you not have this one still?
I didn't give an email to him.
I'm pretty sure you did.
No, I didn't. Uh, maybe I did. Like a month ago?
Yeah.
Did he get an email?
I'm not sure. I'll check it.
Says two with a letter.
Wouldn't be the first time that you said something that didn't happen that actually did, so all the toe off on this one. I thought that was mad humorous. So do you guys see any major changes?
Okay, I got a few.
This is the, can you, go ahead, two.
First place, it seems like we got a lot of bathrooms. We've got, and then, you know, we've got these, the two that we're going to designate public. And then we've got the restrooms out in the new council area. And then we've got the restrooms in the office area. And that's, those, putting in plumbing in the existing is a lot of expense.
Lot of expense. Where's those bathrooms coming from?
Yeah, so what, why do we need those?
There's two toilets that were listed in here for some reason, and that was one of the discussions, that do we really need this? These are in a.
I think this is not an excess of restrooms. You talking about the one that's right here?
No, no, he's talking about there's two in the front entry. Do you really need two in the entry in the lobby?
No, we have two in the lobby. We have a city council meeting. No, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the existing. These two right here.
Yeah, those are new.
These two right here.
The one by the court is that.
Yes, where it says courts?
Yeah, one is having near where a dispatcher can, can go to.
Can you not go to the one that's in the lobbies?
No, we don't. We try to keep them fairly close.
You don't want to put them on an unsecured area when they're doing security.
And that is, by the way, that's an existing one. That's leaving an existing.
I thought these two in the lobby are the existing ones.
They were flipping the door over to the other side.
They are.
What you could do, do we need a men's and ladies' or can we not have one family in the entry area? Only have one that you have a door going into restroom? Flip the other door, close that, get rid of the one in there and make that internal only, just the way it is right now.
You mean a unisex?
Yeah.
Those, that dog will hunt. Women don't want to, no.
Keep, keep these two, just keep that one.
It's true. I just visited my brother. It's not great.
It's true. You don't want to, no. No, I'm sorry.
Have the two public ones.
No, unisex?
No.
Women are saying absolutely not.
I think you get a lot of those out here.
No. Please.
The two public ones, keep them in the hall, but get rid of one of the ones next to the court.
Okay.
Now, why do we need, can we not, I understand the food prep is for the jail, but then we got a kitchenette. Again, we've got plumbing again, and the plumbing's expensive and all the cabinets and stuff. Is there any way we can integrate?
What's the kitchenette? Plumbing, is there plumbing in there?
That's already there.
It's already there. No, that's not there. Kind of there.
He's talking about in the kitchenette. He's not talking about.
It's kind of there right now. We have a kitchenette in there.
You sure?
Yeah, anything that's.
If you go in through the accounting, there's a little kitchenette there. Yeah, it's a sink.
Yeah.
Sink and dishwasher.
Dishwasher.
Yeah.
But it's not.
The big deal with plumbing for us was the worship dryer system.
Well, if there's, if.
There's plumbing already there.
If there's plumbing there, you can turn this bathroom around so you take advantage of the plumbing. Use this bathroom or use, or use one of these others.
You know what, Ed? We got plumbing in both of them, really. All we have to do is buy off. There's plumbing.
That's not a big, that's not a big.
Well, if you're putting it in, there is, but we already have plumbing right there. We got plumbing right there.
Okay.
I'm going with the gentleman down here that does construction. Is this a big deal? What's, what's the cost differential approximately, Mr. Lowe?
How about that? I haven't seen the elevations or.
What's the cost of putting in a powder room?
Uh, seventy-five hundred.
But if you have to put in, if you don't have plumbing and it's an existing building?
Eighty-five. Depends how far you have a salt cut. In commercial, water runs overhead. All you do is put the sewer in the ground. Eighty, I don't know, seventy-five, eighty-five hundred? If there's nothing there. Depends on how far you got to go to get it.
So that's an extra by adding, by having two, if we're only trying to have a powder room so that the dispatcher can go to it, we don't need two. So we can save eighty-five hundred by only having one. Well, but I think the employees that weren't lawyers in that area. They can use it too.